Calling to order this work session of the Town Superior Funding Commission, March 20th. Those can call.
We don't need to call.
Oh.
It does say that.
It does say that we don't need to.
Sorry. I thought I took everything off the terrace.
All right.
Next item?
Next item is introduction.
I'm in it's either.
No.
Next item is introduction of the comprehensive plan update consultant.
Yes. The, as you may know, the town has signed a contract with Clarion and Associates and their proposal was in your packet. And tonight, Darcy White is here from Clarion to say whatever you care to say, but also to talk a little bit about getting started and then take on any questions that you might have about the process pretty much now because we're just in the early stages of getting started, which means a lot of information gathering on their part as well as getting other members of their team going on things like market analysis and whatnot. So, Darcy, do you want to take a shot at the podium there is probably a good idea?
Good evening. Again, my name's Darcy White with Clarion Associates. I'm one of three team members from Clarion. Ben Herman is the principal in charge on this project. You'll be seeing a lot of both of us. I'll be the day-to-day project manager working with staff and also Shelby Summers. So you'll get to know all three of us. In your packet Fred mentioned page thirty-one is the work plan. We'll talk about that briefly in a minute, but just to give you a little bit of background on our other team members, EPS, Economic and Planning Systems out of Denver will be helping us with the market analysis component of this project. They've done a lot of work in the US Thirty-Six corridor and for some of the surrounding communities. So they've got a lot of good background that they'll be putting to work on this project. Will also be joined by FHU if needed on the transportation end of things. With Alex joining the town, we'll be working closely with him, taking advantage of his knowledge and, but also we have that opportunity for some support if we need it. And then Russell Mills Studios will be helping us with some graphic support in terms of looking at some of the conceptual alternatives for the different sites that the town has identified as focus areas. We will also be working with Chris Jopinski with Green Play. She's worked on the town's parks and recreation plan previously. So if there are specific issues related to that, we've got her as a resource as well. So on behalf of the entire team, I just want to say we're very excited to be working with the town on this project and we're excited to get going. We know we've got a quick, quick process ahead of us. As I mentioned, page thirty-one is where the work plan starts. You'll see we've got six tasks that, six tasks in a six-month process basically. So we will be tackling task one through three basically simultaneously. We started last week and we're already underway on the data gathering and getting things underway. So the issues analysis, background, kind of getting up to speed on what some of the trends and changes have been since the last plan was done and also the market analysis piece, which as you know will be a big part of helping look at some of those alternatives. So those things will be happening pretty much at the same time over the next month and a half to two months. And then we'll focus on the actual alternatives themselves, look at some key directions for the town and for the plan and then get into targeted amendments after that. So by really the end of July, we're looking at having those draft, draft recommendations for the plan complete and shooting for an adoption before October. So it's a pretty quick process, but it's also a pretty targeted update to the plan. So we're, we're up for the challenge and we understand there, there is also going to be the town center work that's going on at the same time. So we'll be coordinating with that process. We have four community meetings outlined in our schedule and basically those will be opportunities at key points in the process for anyone, members of the public to participate, share their ideas. We'll also be taking advantage of the town's website and any other avenues that we can to get folks involved in the process and, and give us their input. We have four joint workshops with the town board and the planning commission scheduled. The Fred and I were just talking before the meeting. Beth and I have been working on trying to frame out a firm schedule, at least a tentative schedule for the dates of those joint workshops and also the community workshops so that you guys can get those on your calendar. Given the short timeframe it'll be, so we're not running into those last-minute scheduling snafus. We want to have those all framed down in advance. The first tentative meeting we're looking at is actually two weeks from now on April second. That would be the first joint workshop and we should be able to confirm that in the next day or so when Beth is back. But that would be a chance for you all and the town board to talk to us. We will bring with us a preliminary framework of the issues and the sites and kind of potential issues with each of those for, for consideration as a starting point. And then we'd love to have a discussion with you about other things that you want to see addressed as part of the plan and, and make sure we're, we're headed in the right direction from the beginning before we get too far along. So in terms of the overall schedule, we should have that nailed down in the next couple of days as well in terms of specific dates. I'm trying to think. I think that's, that's all I had. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the process or the scope. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions? Anybody, you know, get through their proposal and have any questions, you know, please ask them now and, yeah.
I don't know if it's a question for you though. Is this, this time, I think I missed the meeting where this was, they were decided on, but this proposed timeline, where did that come from?
Timeline came basically, I think, by understanding is the board would like to have this done before the elections are held in November. And that is also a schedule that's sort of driving whatever they're doing with the town center as well in terms of, of a potential zoning plan approval over there for that as well. And I think we have, well, we're targeted to do that for the comp plan. And the staff is working, is working very hard to do the same thing for the town center as well.
And how much time do you typically do? So I noticed you've done like Great Ridge and Erie and Milliken and so those comprehensive plan updates typically, what, what is a difficult timeframe, timeline?
It depends, depends on the community, but I think if, if we're doing a soup to nuts, you know, we're completely starting over. It's typically a year-long to eighteen-month process, but a targeted update like this, it's not unusual to have, you know, a six-month timeline or an eight-month timeline. So if you were starting over, it might be a little bit of a stretch to say we could do that in six months, but I think given the focus of this plan, it's, it's realistic.
One thing is it, when we get the schedule ironed out, that would be, hopefully everybody can come to every meeting. It may not be possible because obviously we're running through the summer months, but still, you know, this should be a fun process, get a few issues out on the table. And we're going to focus on the properties that are, you know, not developed yet and try to get some resolution of issues there. There may be, in my estimation, there may be some discussion also from folks in original superior. What kinds of changes are they willing to tolerate? Does that, are those kinds of changes, do they make their way into the comp plan? Those kinds of things would be useful to discuss as well.
What does a workshop look like? So like this first one we're going to have, what's, what can I expect? Are we going to walk into a roundtable? We're going to, the board's sitting up here? Are we going to be in a typical meeting forum or is it going to be?
The joint workshops, you mean?
Yeah.
You know, we haven't worked through the details with staff on that yet, but I think our suggestion would be is as much as we can make, you know, if we've got tables set up out here where we can all kind of have a, have a discussion, that would be, that would be our preference.
I think we need, you know, probably some, a little bit of guidance there. I mean, do we need a bigger venue? I think we'll probably start off in this room. However, if it becomes clear that we need a bigger venue, we're, we're going to have to end up out of the school like we did last time or other times that we've had meetings like that in the past.
And how is the meeting run and who, I mean, do you, is it moderated? Is it wide open discussion? Do you have, what's, trying to get a sense what this looks like? Is there an agenda to follow?
Yeah.
Is the public invited? Is, you know, what, just curious what this thing's going to look like.
Sure. I think in terms of the joint workshops, typically we're going to be bringing information for, to you to have, to get your input on. So for each workshop, there will be a topic that we're focused on. For example, the first workshop, we'll be talking about process and about issues. So we will provide you with some initial thinking and let you, you know, react and work through that with us and help us refine it before we go out to, you know, get further into the process and out to the community. The next workshop after that, I think we've got presentation, in that case it'd probably be more of a summary for you about the market, results of the market analysis. So, you know, try to get your take on that and how that will help inform the alternatives process. And then from there, we'll be, you know, talking about alternatives and then subsequently the, the plan updates themselves. So each, each meeting will have a very clear focus and, you know, we will together facilitate that to kind of get input from everybody as much as possible. So.
Will we have information prior to the meeting or will we be given it at the meeting?
Yes. Our, our goal is always to get you something a week in advance. Given the timeline, you know, that's probably as much as it will be just because the, the time between meetings will be so short, but we will make sure that that happens.
And these are public meetings? I mean, even though they're not targeted for the public, they are, are these posted public meetings?
They're we owe to the public.
They're open to the public?
Oh, yes.
Correct. Just like a.
Just like any other work session or?
And I think, like I said, if we have a meeting here on the second of April, be thinking about ideas that you might come up with of how to also facilitate getting, you know, public input just from your own, your own feelings and how you, you know, the rest of the residents in the community, you know, might be able to be attracted to some of, come to some of these meetings. That would be good input. And then as we go along, I think we'll, we'll, we'll learn as we go along a little bit, come up with some techniques, see whether or not you're trying to get more folks at the meeting. And then I think by getting information to people, we'll be, from the start, probably be keeping a list. And so if there's mail-outs, well, then they, they'll get that. If not, stuff will be put up on, on the website. So there'll be a different ways of getting that material to folks.
It seems like a lot of the discussion is around commerce and the open properties and continued development, but our comprehensive plan also, you know, does talk about things like original superior maintaining history and grids and other things that we've had consternation about over the years. Are those types of things going to be addressed in, in this or is this all about the?
Well, I think it's, 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 obviously we're going to focus on, the board wanted us to focus on the outline, the lands that are not developed yet. But in terms of original superior, I'm anticipating that there probably will be some discussion about that because we have, like you say, a series of policies in the comp plan now that address original superior. And the question is, is after some reading and thinking about it, do those hold here? I mean, is, is that still the, the future or do they need to be tweaked? Or is there something, something else?
Well, because a lot of our open development here is contiguous to.
Absolutely.
Original town and.
And it all, it gets the impact.
Right.
It does. I mean, the big develop, the large development and, I mean, you can take Rock Creek itself, it's a big impact, but also, but here for original superior, as you would call it like a neighborhood, it's impacted by the marketplace, it's impacted by, you know, open space of the west to some degree and also, and then this.
The town center.
The town center as well.
Okay.
So they're probably, you know, there may be amongst residents, there may be a little bit of rethinking. There may be some looking at the policies now, they may be changed or, or modified or whatever.
And part of our role, I think, is helping the board and the planning commission and the residents sort of think about those sites within the context of the current policies. And like Fred said, it's a chance to confirm or adjust those as needed. We spent some time walking through this map with staff a couple of weeks ago, looking at some of those sites, you know, how things have changed. And so there are some things that need to be re-looked at, you know, that may involve the policies as well as those sites, but we'll just need to work through those as we go and kind of see what they might be.
I mean, there's, I mean, when you look, when you look at original superior, even, even beyond the contiguous lands that are undeveloped, you've got, you know, right to the, to the north where the marketplace is, we have the number of open lots, residential lots, there have been discussion of residential character zoning on Maple Street and Coal Creek and the fact that that all borders the marketplace currently. And I would assume that if, you know, we're looking at the marketplace and potentially making changes there, that opportunities are going to arise for residents to want to talk about what the north side of original superior is going to look like and whether they want to maintain the residential that they have or whether they're, you know, want to make adjustments based on, you know, what we're thinking we want to do with the marketplace. Same thing here actually with the south along Rogers Farm and those areas.
Right. And layered on top of that is, is a market analysis that will give us some ideas at least about if there's any thoughts of what types of, say, potential land use that could possibly come to superior, you know, where are appropriate places for that? What does that mean for neighboring, for neighboring a land use like, for instance, Agmore for example and, you know, those kinds of things. Take a real look at that because we have land use allocations obviously in our comp plan now. You know, are those appropriate now with some of this new information and potential thinking about the future? It's pretty hard to predict too far out, but on the other hand, we, we want to have, I think allocating land uses in these areas that are impacted by surrounding or neighboring neighborhoods that where people feel comfortable or if there's a land use that made me feel a little uncomfortable about that there's some policies about how those land uses, you know, would develop in relationship to the neighboring neighborhoods. So that's what we're taking a look at and that's what we instructed to do. Does anybody have a problem with April second?
I won't be here.
Okay.
And then we have a meeting on April third as well, planning commission on April third, the next day.
Okay.
And this would be a joint meeting. The first one is to try to get some issues on the table from the planning commission, the board and the public that have to show up.
Are the community meetings and workshops the only way that you'll be interfacing with the public and/or do you have other means of trying to get at what they're looking for?
We will rely on the website. One of the things that we have done successfully is we can, you know, not everyone can come to a meeting, of course, but we can post online polls and different information, basically replicating that meeting online so that others can continue to provide input even after the meeting. So we'll use both of those tools throughout the process to try to get as much input as we can.
And how do we communicate with the old timers? It doesn't even have technology in original town?
It's, it's one option. Obviously it's not going to work for everybody, but, but I think we'll work with, with staff to figure out, you know.
I think it's a handful, but there, it's a few important pieces that are going to.
Bob, can you provide a list?
Could I?
Phyllis can.
I think Phyllis could probably do a better job than me because I, I at least know a couple, but.
Well, yeah, if that's, if that's the kind of information that they need to know, I mean, that's simply got a handful or more, it's just six to ten addresses.
True, right, a handful.
Yeah. If it's a matter of hand-delivering flyers to those folks and, and we can get to the other, you know, rest of the community in other ways, but we typically find we've got to do both, you know, low-tech, high-tech to get to all different aspects.
I assume newsletter, town newsletter will be used and.
Yes.
Probably some advertising in the paper.
Yeah. We'll have to coordinate with the publication of that.
So people know it's happening.
Right.
That's the other advantage of getting those dates locked in ahead of time so that, since it's such a short time period, we can get those in the newsletter and other publications in advance.
When, when they publicize it, are we going to try and say specifically looking at?
Yes.
A piece of property?
Well, we'll be looking at.
An area?
Well, land use will be a, a subject area and so that answer is yes. But there's also a subject area like dealing with transportation.
Yeah.
And those kinds of issues. So we're going to try to segment those in a logical way, you know, tackle them in a logical way and then, then start to pull this together.
Just a time of publication won't just say a work session on, you know, the whole broad subject, it'll kind of narrow it down.
Yeah.
A little bit more what we're.
Yeah, I should have bullet points about what we're going to try to do.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't really have a feel about yet about public participation, so that raises a question about venue, you know, where to have it. But we'll, we'll discuss all that. More than likely, at least with this first one, we'll start, the joint one, we'll start with probably in this room, try to take a crack at that.
And it's fair to say that, I mean, a large portion of this is impacting this area, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, town center, marketplace, Rogers Farm. I know we have a couple other parcels, but.
Well, one thing that we have to keep in mind, Clarion's project right now is to deal with the update of the comp plan sort of in somewhat separation of what's happening in the town center. That's sort of the town center business of possibly getting that zone is on a little, is on a separate track. We're going to drag them in and if we need to, at some point where, where it's logical. Their job is to get this comp plan, you know, update done. And I'm not quite sure, you know, if in terms of the town center process, which is basically trying to put together a zoning plan for, how that's, if that's going to track the same even though Matt wants it to track, you know, so they're done in October also. But where there gets to be a point where they meld together, then we'll, we'll tackle that. I'm not, not sure exactly just personally, you know, how, how, how or when that'll happen. Their job is to get the rest of the comp plan updated. Does that, is that confusing?
Look, well, what's the, what's the town and who's working on that town center track then? Is that just?
Well, the staff, the board is directed to staff along with, there was, has been a request, there has been discussions of staff with the owners, which is basically Biella because I think Mr. Menke is now deceased. And, but his representatives about trying to get the property, the idea notion is, is to, is to do some planning on the property, get it to a point where it, it can be zoned, try to make it a little bit more attractive for development to, in other words, just to get something going is to get it zoned and to get it into a place where it has what you might say some value from the zoning itself. And Matt posed this question, this issue to the board and the board was mulling it over. And I'm not quite sure when they're going to discuss it to say either go ahead or not. Do you, do you fellas? But that's still out there in the future, isn't it? I mean, they haven't had that discussion yet that I'm aware of because I haven't been to it. That doesn't mean anything.
So, I mean, am I missing something or does this feel like this should be part of a comprehensive plan update that involves the community and all the people who are bordering?
They talked about this at that dinner.
And I missed that, I did miss that.
They talked about that at length at the dinner.
Okay. Were there any opinions about if that's, should be separate or together with the? It seems kind of strange to take our largest parcel of undeveloped land and put it on a separate track from outside of a comprehensive plan update that, I mean, I don't have all the details, but that doesn't feel quite right.
It wouldn't be right for us to say, no, you got, you have to wait eight months either to, to address this.
See, from the board's perspective.
That's not the right way to look at it either.
Well, do we have, I mean, if we have proposals to entertain and deal with, that's probably one thing, but to just start planning it separate, I mean, I would agree if there were, I mean, if we were looking at proposals and had to address.
The existing comp plan already has that vision in place, but I think what thereafter is getting the zoning in place just as a static study.
Based on the vision of the previous comp plan?
Based on the vision of both the comp plan, but the vision of the town center, that is Van Meter's, remember all of that? That the plan that Van Meter put together, it's partly that.
The explorer thing or?
Well, and then explorer's mixed up in there as well.
Yeah.
And the zoning would be apparent, the way it's, it's looked at now would be only on Biella and Menke's properties. It wouldn't be the whole thing. It would cover just Biella and Menke's properties, which is the commercial core of the thing. And not, for example, Van Meter's plan on the southern part has a lot of residential, but when you get to the explorer plan, which is the, the sports training facility plan, a lot of that's open because it's fields. So that's the southern part of it that's not, that's not being part of the sort of zoning issue at this point. It's just the retail core and the housing or whatever that goes with it.
So if that's being looked at separately, all we're talking about is the remaining open parcels, the marketplace, Rogers Farm, Richmond, Nets.
Seventy-sixth Street.
Seventy-sixth Street.
I said there's an open parcel down there in Rock Creek, but we've, we've, you know, we've had presentations on that and that we're all pretty much convinced that's to be a commercial parcel anyway.
But that decision's not been made?
What's that?
This decision has not been made or?
I don't think so. And.
No.
They haven't had that discussion.
For the town center.
Right. Because Matt presented it and they, taking a couple of weeks to think about it.
So I don't know when that's going to be a major.
That's coming up, coming up as to whether they want to go ahead with that notion.
But I, I just say, I don't know if it's the April ninth, there's not going to be a meeting on the twenty-sixth. That meeting's been canceled next Monday. And then the ninth, I don't think it's on the ninth, it might be on the twenty-third, but just have to let you know.
Right.
So from what you all have heard, you're comfortable with that approach?
I, I think you have to keep moving that forward to keep everybody engaged on it, on the track. I don't think it should wait until we go through and review it and then they can address it. You know, it's already been in the comp plan. We've reviewed it for years and years, time and time again.
I think the issue is, are the, are the policies in the current comp plan regarding the town center, irregardless of these other plans, do those have enough muscle? Do they convey what, what we still have a vision for?
Well, the risk of any comprehensive plan update and public input is visions change and ideas change.
Right.
And what people are thinking today versus what we were thinking back in two thousand, when did we do the last update? Four, six, four? That, I mean.
Well, six.
Yeah. Those, I mean, new people come in, visions change, ideas change, concepts and, and, I mean, so you're engaging the public, you're going to get input on, again, on the town center and so.
Well, I, yeah, I think we understand. And I think what we'll, we'll do is one of the, try to at least if I'm just thinking out loud here, we're trying to see where this zoning issue goes with the town center, see where this goes. And then if it, if that's what they want, what they want to do, go ahead and put a zoning plan together and then that means ultimately it's going to come before the planning commission.
And you're saying they, you mean the town board?
Yeah. They want to get going on that and they agree to go with the group, the developer group, which we call developer group now, is basically an architect, you know, the owners and some, you know, land people, real estate folk, that group. If they go ahead with that, then we'll have to see what kinds of paths they're going down and where we may need to put that together. That's. That's, that's, that's the sort of an up in the air kind of a thing to me.
So hypothetically, hypothetically, let's say that, that proceeds and zoning gets established, and the vision that comes out of, out of the comprehensive plan is contradictory to what was done. Are we stuck with zoning then at that point, I assume, or?
Part of a.
Yeah, if, if, if it went that way, you'd be right if the zoning was passed. I mean, it's, if it's done, it's done.
Right.
Irregardless of what the comp plan's saying.
But I think part of our job is to be very clear with the public about what's on the table as part of this update and what's not. I think, you know, there is an opportunity for refinements, but we need to be clear that we're not starting over here. Um, we're focused on these, these areas that this other process is going on, so, you know, there's, there's a fine line there of, I realize when you, you go to the public, you are gonna get lots of, lots of opinions, but I think that's part of our, our job is to help guide that process and make sure we're clear about what we want feedback on.
The public lives here, that is the community, so.
Sure.
It's, um, relatively sensitive to it being driven by even just our elected officials or the planning commission or staff or a consultant who's in here. And so, and, and we have proven over the last decade and a half or more than I've been here that the public has tremendous influence on where things go and what happens. Sometimes you get intense engagement, other times you can do exactly what you said, you know, and everybody's like, aha, and they go on, I mean. So I, I have a heightened sensitivity to, you, you can try to direct the staff or direct the, the update, but, I mean, you open up, you're sort of opening up Pandora's box when you're opening up the comprehensive plan. And you're gonna get, you know, you, you could potentially get people pushing really hard to address areas that they've, you know, changed their mind on or have a different vision, so.
Or new people.
Or new people.
Exactly.
Yeah, new opinions, so, yeah. And I think that's what the comprehensive plan update is about. It shouldn't be about us picking what it is we think we want to do an update on. I mean, it should be an opportunity for the public to loo- look at it as well, and if they have different opinions about what's important today, that should be listened to, you know, so.
Right. That's right. Anything else?
Anyone else? Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, look forward to working with you.
Thanks, Darcy. I just wanted to say too, is that we, we went through, there were eleven proposals for this project, and, uh, it took a lot of work to go through all of the proposals, and, uh, ultimately, the group that was reviewing it, myself being one of them, uh, agreed on, on this choice. So, uh, for Clarion, so we're very happy to work with them, and, uh, I have some familiarity with them myself. But they do good work, and I've gotten, we've got good, um, references, uh, comebacks from other communities in our region that have used Clarion in the past, so we felt very comfortable with hiring them. Okay. All right, thanks.
Sounds good. Item number four on our agenda is discussion regarding handheld moving signs as part of chapter sixteen of the Superior Municipal Code. This was brought to us during the joint session with the town board a couple of weeks ago. So those of us that were there had a little preview of the subject and had a little bit of discussion on it. So Fred, you wanna give us a little bit more background?
Well, um, basically, um, on this one, you're right, it's a request from board members to look at it, and this is a workshop, so we're not reviewing any language or not reviewing anything like that. Just discussing the concept. The concept, basically, once, it took me a couple of emails to figure out what spinners they were talking about. Until I realized that I was actually told, no, it's these handheld guys out there.
Twirlers.
The twirlers, they're spinning the signs. And, uh, they're becoming a little bit more ubiquitous as we go across the landscape, uh, but they're everywhere. Uh, they're in many communities, and so the idea was to, to look at that, see what's going on, um, in, in other communities. And, um, to basically summarize, the memo that, and basically Jay and Beth put together, is that it's, it's sort of split, some places allowed and some do not. And I asked Christine before, this is not a freedom of speech issue, because it's basically advertising a commercial element and, more than likely. And, um, so, um, we control signage for commercial development. Now, one of the things that we've, and, and it has to do with a lot of it, it's in the, the spinners are out there in the right of way, because they're right along the curb, normally the right of way goes beyond the curb. And so they're not standing on their lot somewhere, they're standing right out there. Now, the, we do have in our code the ability for folks to put signs in the right of way on a temporary basis. In other words, you have a permit, and you can put that out there, it'd be like in real estate or, you know, or something, maybe not real estate, because they end up on the lot. But at any rate, we have that ability to do a temporary static sign in the right of way.
Those require a permit?
That requires a permit. Now, you can also, you, we have some encroachment of monument signs in the right of way, and those are permanent, and they get a license agreement from the town to do that, and that's in very exceptional cases. But we do have some monument signs that are closer to the road, but they happen to be in the right of way because it's so wide. McCaslin is one of them, I think, up here at the, at, um, this office building here on the south side. They have one. Now, um, election signs are allowed in the right of way during election season, you can do that, yeah? As the states in the code, those are static signs that sit there. Now, the town is not, there's, the code is silent on whether people during election season can stand out there, uh, either on the medium or on the curves or whatever with signs. The code is silent there, and the town does not do anything about that during election season. And I don't know if your last, because I don't live here, but your last election season, if people were out with signs or not in the right of way, they probably were, because it's very common all over the city, you know, for people to be out there promoting their candidate. Basically, we just, right now, the town just leaves that alone. There's no issue there, nothing to enforce, because it's not really specifically stated, and just don't deal with it. But they can have their election signs out there, you know, stuck in the ground. So there you are, I mean, in terms of, summary is, you know, in terms of the, uh, if you look at the memo that Jay and Beth wrote, it, you know, some do and some don't. And that's what we need to, what they want to discuss is whether we want to see that. I think it's an idea worth pursuing so that we go ahead and draw up language and modify the code or not. And I guess from the staff position, not too keen on it. These folks are getting more, what I would say, ubiquitous across the metroplex. I mean, if you drive around, you see quite a few. The gold guy at, uh, where I am at, I left and wherever South Parker Road into there is now wearing a, a bunny suit with his gold sign, and then he has a compatriot on the opposite corner, the tax guys have their folk out. And there was another guy in his suit walking backwards down another street today, trying to get folks to go into an apartment complex and rent an apartment.
Is that a, I mean, if they're not carrying a sign, are they?
He had a sign.
What if they're not carrying, what if the Chick-fil-A cows out here, you know, doing backflips on the right of way?
Usually a sign.
Without a sign.
With no sign?
Yeah.
Well, they're free to walk along in a costume, I would assume, along the street. Now, obviously, um, if someone wanted to challenge that, Chick-fil-A, the cow, is their logo or is their moniker, you might say. And so then everyone knows, you know, if you're any one at all.
This shirt does have a Chick-fil-A message on it.
Right.
But your code right now prohibits portable signs and finds portable signs to include handheld signs. So right now, these types of signs are prohibited in town.
So, so a shirt with a sign on it would be considered a sign?
Portable signs are defined to include a sign displaying a commercial message held by, attached to, or affixed on an individual. So yes.
Okay.
Because I would say it would be attached to or fixed. So, and I think what they were really intending was a sandwich board, yes.
Right, 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 yeah.
You know, but I think it would include a T-shirt, you know, with a marijuana leaf for, with, you know, go to Joe's Pot Shop in Louisville, that would be included.
Okay.
And there's nothing prohibiting, I mean, should we, it be allowed, the town wouldn't be able to prohibit somebody from a neighboring community coming over and advertising on our streets or our right of ways.
Well, and, and, I mean, I know this wouldn't be the intent, but if, if just a person was wearing a Chick-fil-A shirt and walking down the street in the right of way, are they violating the sign law?
If they're there with the intended purpose to.
It has to be the intent of.
I, I, yeah.
They can't stand there for two hours.
I think a difference between, you know.
Stand on the crosswalk and keep pushing.
And be careful what you put on there, boy.
Well, it's also, it'd be like, it'd be like our pandering, no pandering. A person with a bucket can walk down the street and walk up the street as long as they keep moving, but if they stop and stand at the corner and approach a car.
No pandering.
So I would think if the person with the sign on them kept walking back and forth, waving, the cars drawn attention, that could be enforceable, but if they're walking from one spot to the next, I don't see how.
Right, because if they're just a consumer who happens to have a Chick-fil-A shirt and was wearing it that day, you know, certainly that wouldn't be enforceable.
But our code does, oh, I'm sorry.
The reason this, another piece to this whole story, the reason this is coming before us is a couple of the town board members were approached by Sears appliance store, new, new tenant at the Marketplace. They would like to have these signs in use to promote the new business, or perhaps some new event, or new sale of their business. So that's, I guess that's why this came.
That's where this came from.
And the, the town board members that met with them, the two that spoke to us at the, the dinner, were in support of it and, but thought that it should come to us, and.
I think they weren't in support of it until everybody started throwing out all the possibilities.
All the different presentations of why somebody cares.
And then they started going, oh, I really didn't think about that, oh, I really didn't think about a person, you know, all signed up and everything, dancing up and down this very bad transition we have out here, drawing attention to themselves and causing accidents. And the fact that anybody can do it from any town, uh, Joe's paint, Joe Painter can have a guy come out here and say, hey, you want your house painted? Call me. Um, I think then they started to back off, so.
Can you require a permit like we do for?
You could, but just requiring a permit doesn't mean that you can arbitrarily deny a permit just because.
It just slows down the likelihood that Joe's gonna come down with his sign and try to drum business up, you know, because he thought of it that Saturday. So planning would have to be necessary. And there could be some limitations as to how frequently you can do it, right, and how long you can be out there.
Yeah.
Other parameters that could be defined if we cared to, and, yeah.
A permit could say you've got.
But I mean, we have some.
Right, I believe, you know, I believe you do have restrictions, um, for banners, um, advertising special events, special sales. You know, there's, I believe, a limitation on how many times a year you can have a banner and for the duration of time that it can be displayed.
There's four banners in the memo, I mean, but it's this section in the sign code, four banners, cal- one calendar year, displayed up for thirty days for each event, so that if you really want to get after it with a banner, you can have it up for four months. Or not, you know, or four different quarters, one in each quarter.
But it's gotta be attached to your building to do that.
Yeah, it's attached to your building.
Yeah, so that doesn't help people who are back in the, back in the marketplace that might be trying to drive traffic from.
Right.
Here back to there.
Yeah, and it, well, Sears is a little different situation, because they're right on the street.
They are, yes.
But that's not, we're not talking about Sears, we're in, specifically, we're talking about the concept of, of.
Allowing people standing on the right of ways.
And the other thing that kind of came up in that discussion, because I was also very concerned about the, the safety issue that we have over here, is that once you say you can be in the right of way, then it seemed like it would be difficult to say, well, you can't be in this right of way, even though we know in, in a context, that's one of the most dangerous near-miss places you're gonna be any day of the week in terms of your car. And so there was that, that other issue that says, how do you, once you say they can be in the right of way, how can you prohibit specific rights of way, you know, because you might have particular safety issues there?
Right, yeah, you can't restrict.
It kind of opened it up, and that was, that was, in my opinion, too dangerous.
Which all your, all your traffic is.
Yeah.
I mean, once they're up and in, you can have a balloon on top of your building that tells them what's going on, and that would, they'd see that. But the idea is to try and capture it from out here.
Right.
What, what about the, uh, the issue of, of a distraction? When you all drive around and you see these guys, this, this is a distraction?
I think it's a distraction.
It catches your eye.
Taking your eyes off the road.
I think.
Yeah, there's a guy out at Sheridan and Hundred Twentieth.
Yes, yes.
I think he does it for a painter, I think he does it for local businesses, he's, he's out there, he's actually very good. But I, I've seen two rear-enders at that intersection that were totally attributed to people paying attention to him. Because it just takes, I mean, it's like, okay, I'm gonna text for two seconds, I mean, whatever, and they just look over for a second.
Another distraction.
Person, person in front, they got a yield right there, a yield turn, and both times it was on that yield turn where the guy's in the, and he's in this triangular piece between where the yield comes on one side and the street comes on the other, and where they yield turn, and if the person in front starts to yield turn, but then stops for some reason, the second, it's always the second person that's still looking at him, dancing, and so, it may be going like this, because he's out there rocking away, and then looks up and this guy's stopped, and I've seen two rear-enders, because I go to work down there, I've seen that happen twice.
Well, you certainly can't control how many there are, I mean, worst case, you could have four or five people out there spinning, trying to get people into the mall, and then you've got all kinds of distractions at the intersection, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that if you allow one, you're gonna have two, three, four, and, you know, four or five or even more. You have to decide if you think it's worth the kinds of distraction that it's got to be.
I mean, I, I'll, I mean, and I, I agree with you, Craig, so there's a distraction there, but I, I don't, I've never seen an area that had, I mean, where it's allowed, I've never seen four or five out there, it's usually there's somebody out there doing it. I mean, I, I would be concerned about banning it, because we think it's gonna go nuts, I don't, I don't know that it would go nuts, but it's, um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I've not seen any accidents because of it, I also don't pay close attention, because I'm driving, but you're right, there are people who are, I have seen people waving at them.
That's a long white when you're trying to get.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Other people are doing other things, so that's what I've seen.
But, yeah, I agree.
And, and that intersection can have, I've seen it definitely with two, um, two different people on that same intersection.
Yeah.
And that intersection is straightforward compared to our kamikaze area over here.
Much, much, much more of this.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I can't tell you how many near-misses I've had, and it's, it's just always scary every time I come home. So let's not make it scarier.
And, I mean, I, I would look at it, if there's some way you could say, nobody on McCaslin, nobody out here, you have to be in, up here at the next.
I think that's where they want to be pissed.
Yeah, right, want to be on the. Up here at the next intersection, if they feel like they were trying to catch people in the, you know, Panera area and, and drive them down in there, that'd be one thing. But I just, I just don't see having it out on McCaslin personally.
From what we heard from Matt, that was not an option.
Right, to differentiate, just say, oh, you have to only be back here.
Sounds like that's not an option.
But in any intersection, it's dangerous, I mean, the parts of that intersection where, where Whole Foods is, is, is dangerous, it's hard, it's tough for pedestrians to cross, it's.
People coming down Marshall Road.
Yeah, the Sycamore, yeah, the left.
Speed coming.
That, yeah, the curve, you can't, it's pretty much blind, kind of totally blind, but it's not, not a straightaway to, to see what's going on.
I'm kind of concerned about the people that have told the signs. You know, that's my, you know, talking about the drivers, but then the people holding the signs, big is to win, come, low amount into traffic. I mean, how old are these kids? Are they even eighteen, are they fourteen, twelve?
They make good money.
So that's one of my concerns.
Someone's thinking about, you talk to one of them and find out what they make. They make really good money, because they get paid by the hour and they get a percentage of driven sales.
But that's a good point, we're in a high wind zone, and, um, that, there could be some, some things like that too, yeah.
And who says pull them off the street? Do they have to stay out there, no matter what the wind is, before the owner says, no, you have to come back in, so, and I don't think there's any way we can regulate that.
Yeah, that, Craig, you, you, one thing we didn't go into was, you know, to. Yeah, that, Craig, you, one thing we didn't go into was, you know, does it, do they drive sales?
Yeah, from what I understand, they do.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think they'd be out, I don't think they'd be out there if they didn't have it.
Yeah.
I mean, I've seen ones that, I mean, I didn't know the place was there.
Right.
Not that I necessarily went in that day, but I now know it's there.
Right.
So it's compulsive sales, basically.
Yeah, I don't know about Sears appliance, how many people would be driving down the street, decide, oh, I'm going to go buy an appliance, but...
I don't know that it's, I don't know if it's designed to drive them in there at that moment, I think they're just after, they make them aware that it's in that center. And it, and they are kind of tucked back in there, and if you're not in there, I think that's their whole point, is they just want to drive awareness that they're in there. And I think that from my perspective, I don't have a problem with it, I think they're entertaining and it's, they're fun to watch and just got to be responsible drivers, just like looking at any other distraction driving down the road. But I think the free market will control how many of them there are out there. I mean, there's generally one or two and, but every business is not going to put them out there because they are expensive and they don't work for everybody and...
Well, but if we're trying to, I mean, I'm, I'm all for helping the businesses that have located in our town and maybe we need to consider other options around what we do and don't allow in signage. So that these newer entities that come in or the ones that are tucked back a little bit more, maybe we have to reconsider other, other options for good signage. So they, they are more apparent even though they're back there. Instead of introducing something that I think would be difficult to control and has issues with it.
The problem is other options, I mean, the other options are signs on buildings, signs on marquees, which are all controlled by the owner of the property. And then there's, I mean, some of that's available now, I mean, any of those folks can put a sign on 36, but I suspect the cost to do that is significant. Because we see Target and Costco and I think either Ross or TJ Maxx, one of them is on, out there on the 36 side. But, I mean, that moves it into the responsibility of the, of the property owner. And is it the spinning that's the issue or is it the dancing and the spinning or is it the sign being there, you know?
It's the whole act, I mean, they have their headphones in and they're, you know, it's almost like, they're, they're, I think they're told, you know, you can't stand still. They're never just standing there holding the sign. Like the idea is you have to draw attention to yourself. And just standing there holding the sign does not draw attention. So the idea is draw attention, so they see the sign and so by doing that, you're out there dancing and moving to whatever you're listening to in your headphones. Moving the sign, just spinning it, catching it behind your back. And I mean, a good one is, is, you know, moving quite a bit and drawing, definitely drawing attention, so. And like Sonic does it, they just send some kid that's from inside the fast food place out to the street with a sign. Well, yeah, he just kind of stands out there and goes, you know, he's not so distracting.
Right.
But if you've got a situation like this, you're going to have probably somebody take advantage of it that's really good at it. And get, you know, get a business to pay him well and he'll stand out there and probably do the whole, whole thing.
You know, we've had, we look at these pretty carefully, but we, there was a proposal down in the Rock Creek Center, down there where the Safeway is, is to put up another, another tenant sign. I'm not sure what happened to that, at this proposal time, it's, it hasn't been discussed or they haven't come back with their, with a, a sign proposal. But we would be willing to entertain changes to any PD or whatever to put a tenant sign, make sure they got, you know, enough tenant signs out there on the edge. It's not the same as having a guy dancing around, but it's better than nothing for those who are, don't have the ability to have a great big sign like Safeway on their building. And we're, you know, down there or any of these types of places where businesses change, having a good tenant sign, monument sign out there is very helpful. Because people don't know what's inside, they lose track of what's in there until they all of a sudden maybe see a sign, oh, I didn't know they were there, I'll go there then.
Or I didn't know they left.
Yeah, or they didn't know they left, right. So we're open to that.
But that, again, requires property owners to be willing to put a marquee out there and...
Right, spend the money, put a marquee out there, go through the process, whatever.
Yeah, getting a small tenant to get the property owner to go do that is probably tough, yeah.
So it might be useful for the town board if we were to give them our pulse on this, maybe through a straw poll.
That's what they want.
Okay, I mean, what I'm hearing is it's pretty negative across the board. And what I'm curious about is would, would opinions change if we were to, say, make this a permit process? So maybe option one is just yes or no to twirling signs. But a second option would be yes to twirling signs if it was regulated by permit.
Does that include by location?
Well, we've been told it can't be regulated by location, so that's off the table. But it could be, it could be limited to businesses in town, maybe, maybe not, she's shaking her head. Length of time, length of time out there, what could, what could a permit regulate that?
Well, length of time.
Length of time and use.
Manner.
Not place, time, manner.
Time, manner.
Manner, what do you mean by manner?
Whether you can twirl the sign.
You can regulate the size of the sign that they would be holding, you know, so you don't have somebody out there with a six by two, you know, foot sign. But you can limit it to...
Four twirls per minute.
Right.
Like your other signs, limited by square footage of size.
So the interesting thing is, we haven't had anybody do this.
Not even attempt, right?
I mean, part of what I don't understand, I guess...
I've seen somebody at IHOP.
Is we're trying to solve a problem that's...
Yeah, I'm here in the corner for IHOP, I think I did see someone in the corner.
I don't know that it's a problem that's trying to be solved or a...
Permission that's trying to be given.
Permission that's possibly wanted. I mean, because right now you do have a prohibition of handheld signs.
And, and someone who had a business who would use it if they were allowed to use it, apparently.
But if they use it, you can, there will be others.
Yes, beer, let go of a beer special and...
It's very common.
Somebody out there with a sign, you know, fat tire special or something.
Miller can do backflips.
Yeah.
So what about those little inflatable people with the waving on them?
Those are already covered.
Put a big gorilla on the building.
That's an affixed, that's an affixed sign.
Blowey guy, that was, yes, I think.
Are those guys regulated? Because those, those are hazardous.
They can't do them either.
They're not allowed.
No, it's a moving sign.
Those are creepy.
Moving objects.
So why, why is it, is there some, some exception for events? Like in a, in an event, like at our Chili Fest and things like that, or is that, oh, that's not, not in right of way, right? This is specific to right of way?
Right, right of way.
Yeah, you prohibit signs incorporating any flashing or moving illumination or with illumination that periodically varies in intensity color. Or signs which have any visible moving part, visible revolving parts or visible mechanical movement of any description or other apparent visible movement achieved by electrical pulsations by actions or normal wind currents. Including but not limited to promotional balloons, inflatable devices and the like, so blowey guys.
Good.
A giant gorilla on top of the building.
Good.
The tube guy, the tube guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of those.
Anyone have any closing arguments before we do a straw poll? Okay, let's do a straw poll, so all of those in favor of allowing twirling signs? Don't all jump up at once. Okay, so that's about with...
So we don't have to, we don't have to come up with anything new.
This is a work session, this is just kind of a discussion.
So we've already got a regulation that doesn't allow this.
Correct.
So...
I stand by our regulations.
Any, so question two, is any change of heart if, if it was regulated by permit? Okay.
I just don't like the castle dad out there.
I think the castle is just enough.
No takers on that one either?
No takers there.
I had my hand down, I'm on the edge, but, yeah, on the permit, but...
No, I don't see where a permit's going to make a difference.
Unless you specify the location.
And if you tell them, hey, can't do this, this, this and this, then it's pointless for them.
Yeah, it'll slow it down and discourage people from doing it, but, you know. But if somebody sees it doing it, it'll probably get done more illegally because they'll think they're allowed to do it, they'll just go and do it.
It only takes somebody to see it a lot. I was looking, yeah, it seems the word...
Hannah, we're going to go down and ask the kid for his permit?
Put a stop in the middle of traffic, wait a minute, do you have a permit?
Then we got a police car with blue lights blocking traffic and then...
Just like we saw people with dogs on leash running through, running through Rock Creek.
Constantly, that's right.
Right, so...
Well, that's true, though.
So then the recommendation is, we, we recommend after discussion that we retain the prohibition of these...
But it's not a formal recommendation since this is...
It'd be a formal recommendation.
The straw poll results are very decisive.
They need an action after bringing up the next meeting.
Or not.
Or not.
Any other updates for us, for the commission?
Not really in terms of any activity, in terms of, at least what I know, anyway.
Okay.
But I'm not in on every conversation, so I don't know all of everything, so.
What's on the agenda for the April 3rd meeting or do we have anything?
I think it is an easement for Excel energy.
Are they wanting an easement or?
Yes, Excel easement, yeah, on the 3rd.
Where?
And then also just interchange preliminary design. I think Alex Aaronallow is going to do a presentation on that and then the Excel. The Excel easement is at the North Pole across town property.
What's the date of the work session with the comp plan? Is that the 2nd also?
That's the 7th, okay.
3rd, okay, so we have a meeting on the 2nd and the 3rd.
Spring break.
Yes, and I have, yeah, and I have already mentioned that to Matt, that those two days are, hope to carry over of spring break.
Or the 4th, if you go back to school on Wednesday.
Yeah, crazy.
Oh, they do a mid-week to mid-week or?
No, all week plus two days.
Week and a half.
Week and a half, yeah.
They're called exchange days or something.
Professional days.
It's weather, yeah.
Water Valley District, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
We found out today that one of the staff members...
Wait, wait, we're not off? Could you adjourn the meeting?
Meeting's adjourned.
Is it off?
Nope.
There we go, okay.
Yeah, just, this is really new information and I toyed with the idea of not seeing.